Listen for everybody.
I'm glad you're here. Well, I've come to you this afternoon seeking your guidance and your will of all that we do, Lord. We pray that our Lord might seek your will through prayers, meditation, and help the people of Marion County. Forgive us where we fail you, Lord, because we know that we do each day. Go with us and forgive us where we fail you. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting going. We're here today to get everybody's input on curfew, covering what the governor passed Friday evening. I'll let Mr. Hunt answer y'all's questions, explain it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Let me explain this briefly for a second, Wayne. Let me get up here. What we drafted here has got two components to it, and there's a reason for that. State law allows the probate judge in a county situation to declare quarantine. The quarantine would be specifically for some kind of an infectious disease like we have in this case with COVID-19, and that restricts movement of citizens. The county has the ability, counties and cities, to implement a curfew under emergency situations. The curfew aspect is basically where we can impose a penalty to violations of it. And so we've combined both of those into this document where Judge Vic would issue the quarantine and Marion County would issue the curfew. We've discussed this with several of our mayors and some other members of the municipalities as well. I think they're interested in the curfew aspect of it as well. One thing we're not trying to do here, unless y'all say different, the governor Friday closed certain businesses. Should already limited restaurants to basically takeout or drive-through. None of the mayors I've spoken with, none of y'all I've spoken with, have any desire to go any further to close any businesses or do anything like that. The main thing we are trying to do here is get people to realize the importance of not congregating together. Obviously, the governor issued the restrictions on 10 or more people or to be, you know, stay separated six foot apart even if you are less than 10. That's the main thing we're trying to get people to do here. We're not restricting people from going to work, going to the store. If they, you know, people gotta go to the grocery store, people might have to run to the retail business, people might have to exchange their child, you know, run to the restaurant, pick up your drive-through or call in orders.
And people can still go fishing, the sheriff can still go turkey hunting. We're not stopping people from... This is a health and safety curfew for what we're looking at.
That's exactly right. And still, we encourage outdoor activities. Obviously, we are a rural county. People love being outdoors and doing different things. We're just asking for people to keep in mind the social distancing requirements of the six-foot bear. The president has extended that even a longer period of time, and our governor reinforced that even this morning in a video that she did. But we're not, we're not trying to tell people not to get out and do the things they have to do. What we're trying to tell people is be mindful, stay at home except for the essential things that you have to do. Don't congregate together with other people, and especially with other people from other areas if at all possible, because we're trying to stop the spread of this virus. We have at least 10 in this county that have been confirmed. We don't have all the details on all those. The numbers in the state are rising steadily every day. We're fortunate in this county. We have two hospitals, but still, we're limited with healthcare. We don't need to get overrun with that, and we've been fortunate as far as I know with what we have had so far. Have not been outbreak of serious cases, but that's possible, and that potential is there. So all we're asking for here is for people just to stay at home, go do what you gotta do, and get back as soon as you can. And I know I read some comments where somebody asked about going to work and, you know, they gotta go shopping after work before they go home. That's understandable. We're not trying to stop that.
That's what we're encouraging. Go to work, do your shopping, then go home.
Exactly.
Get it all on a trail.
That's right. So, do you have any questions or comments or things?
Another thing, Scott. We're not doing this to try to find people. We're not doing this to try to get revenue out of it. We're, we're just, this is for safety and health.
That's exactly right. Ideally, no one, no one's making any money off of this or getting fined on this, because we just want people to be mindful of the dangers that are out there. Too often, we can overlook some of these dangers and think it's not gonna happen to me or not gonna happen to our neighbors, but it very well could. So that's what we're just trying to get people to be extremely mindful of the dangers of this virus. But I know the sheriff is overrun with things, and the last thing he wants is to have deputies pulling people over all the time for this or, you know, stopping people. So hopefully, that won't be the case, but that is not the intent at all.
General, can I speak?
Yeah.
Uh, Scott touched on it a while ago. Marion County has 10 confirmed cases. We know of. I've been on the phone with different healthcare providers, doctors, and our numbers are gonna go up. I can guarantee you that. The numbers are not reflecting from the ADPH right now. Ours is on the rise. I know of a couple that we may have our first death in the next 48 hours here in Marion County. This is how serious this is. It's spreading pretty quick. As far as this order goes, I agree with the order because we're trying to protect the citizens of Marion County. Hope you understand that. As far as law enforcement goes as a whole, we've met with all the chiefs. We're not gonna just pull anybody over, anyone over at any given time. It's just like, Tim, you mentioned it earlier, you still have groups of congregation, young kids congregating in towns and parking lots, this sort of thing. That's what we look for. You know, it's at 2:00 in the morning, they need to be at home.
Yeah.
If you're going back and forth to work, Scott mentioned it, that's fine. You can't shut down total business. We understand that, and that's not what we're trying to do, not what I wanna try to do, not what y'all are trying to do, not what the governor's trying to do. He's limited certain areas, of course.
We're trying to keep as much revenue flowing as possible.
You got it. I understand it, because we're gonna be in a recession if we're not careful at some point in time. But I want you to understand how serious this is in Marion County. I know I've had some phone calls. Well, why, well, I had in Franklin County, Lamar County, Winston County doing certain things. Our number's a lot higher than theirs, okay? It's here. It's all over the Marion County as we know of. So you can't compare county to county a lot of times. So, you know, just keep that in mind. You know, the meetings we were in last week, Keith, you was in there, that lady said eight to 12 days.
Yeah, we haven't peaked yet.
We hadn't peaked yet. And keep this in mind, too. New York City hasn't peaked yet. We're five weeks behind New York City as we speak. So we're behind the eight ball. So, you know, I just wanted to express my feelings to y'all about this order. I agree with it. We're not trying to just restrict everybody just staying home all the time, but you gotta work. We understand that. You gotta go to the grocery store. You gotta go to Walmart. Just ask, send one family member to the grocery store, not the whole family. Things like that. It's really about common sense. We all just use the common sense. We can get through this. This is very crucial to Marion County, in my opinion. I'm worried about it. I have been worried about it. I'm still worried about our jail. Right now, we're in good shape. I believe we'll continue to be in good shape, but just imagine what if it happens, gets in the jail. We've had it. Marion County's broke. I understand it. Y'all understand that. The nursing homes is hurting right now. Hospitals are gonna be hurting. Scott mentioned it. We'll get overwhelmed. The hospital system may be overwhelmed in Marion County before this is over. I hope not. I'd rather be over-prepared than under-prepared. That's what we've gotta do. We're trying to get out in front of this thing. So far, nowhere in the United States we've got out in front of it, in my opinion, but we're trying, and that's what we're asking y'all to do.
As Sheriff, let me tell you.
Thank you.
There've been a number of conversations that several of us have held with our medical providers in our community, and unfortunately, I don't think that one of those conversations has been positive, because they're seeing what people are dealing with every day, and not even just with this virus. This virus is potentially very deadly, but it's also putting strains on the other aspects of the healthcare in our county, because you're not able to go in and see your doctor like you normally would. You know, there's limits on, you know, being able to utilize the healthcare facilities, and so it's not just even with this virus. It spreads out throughout, but, but our healthcare providers are concerned, and I think, Sheriff, we need to be concerned as well and try to get out in front of this as much as we possibly can.
One question I've been asked a lot over the weekend. I've had people ask me, do we need a letter stating that we are going back and forth to work? No, not, you know, not as right now. Like Kevin's talking about, you know, the law's not, they're not looking to stop anybody, but now, if Kevin's got a deputy that's sitting, say, at Rock City, and he sees the same car go by a half a dozen times in an hour, he's gonna stop him regardless whether there's a curfew on or not. If it's 2:00 in the morning, they're up to no good. I mean, as far as a letter stating that you are going back and forth to work, that's not required.
No, sir. There's obviously a lot of trust built in into this curfew and this quarantine. What we're hoping it does is just hammer home the idea of how important it is. The sheriff made an excellent point about all five of you don't need to go to the grocery store, you know, as much as possible. And sometimes it's not possible. You know, sometimes you all have to go, but, but keep those trips as minimalistic as they possibly can. And just go do your business and get home.
Well, what's passing this curfew we got now in Marion County gonna solve that problem?
Which part?
The problem people want to walk on, all family. How's this gonna solve that problem?
We're hoping it reinforces the idea of people to stay home and do it. Does it stop it? No, it doesn't.
What the governor declared is, what can the deputies and the police, the curfew's under now? State law, right?
What the governor did was she encouraged municipalities and counties to do, do basically what we're doing. She closed down a handful of businesses. I hate to call them non-essential because I think we can all question that, but she closed down businesses where direct contact cannot be avoided. And by doing so, she's hoping to basically enact her own kind of curfew, but she's, she didn't go as far as what we're trying to do here about stay home. She's encouraged the shelter in place, is what she's done, and the limiting of the 10 people or more or the smaller groups where you can't, you know, stay more than six foot. So ours is a little bit more than what she's done, but ours is in line with what she was requesting everyone to do.
So we can go by what the governor says and request people to do it without passing this?
Yeah, we can. Of course, the sheriff has to enforce what the governor did anyway, without any further action of...
The only problem I got with it, and I understand what you're talking about, all this, but the people's freedoms are being taken away slowly by, you know, and I know it's an epidemic. I know the virus, and I know, I know all that, but people, they're under enough stress. And, you know, ordinary people, your common people are going to obey this. They're staying at home.
And, and you're right. I mean, the last thing we wanna start doing is chipping away at people's rights, because obviously, when you start doing that, sometimes you don't get them back. That's a concern. I think everyone has. I know I have, and speaking with the sheriff, he has, and speaking with our district attorney, he was one of the main ones to bring up people's rights, even though it may benefit him as a prosecutor. But, um, so we're trying to be mindful of that, and that's when we put a cap on how far this, this can go. But the concern we hear from the healthcare professionals is that people aren't paying attention, and we hope that the president can direct people to do things and ask for people to do things, and he's in Washington DC, and it's a little bit more further away. And then we see all this stuff going on in New York City. Governor Ivey can issue an order for Montgomery, and we can see the numbers statewide. And a lot of times, the mindset, and at least I know I have, is, well, that's DC, that's New York, that's Birmingham. It's not really happening here, but hopefully, y'all putting on another further step on people. And again, what we really wanna try to, we don't wanna be keeping people from going and doing the things they have to do, but hopefully with the local county commission doing something, people can realize, hey, this is at home. You know, this is my neighbor. In fact, we've had, look, we got good people in this county. One of the concerns we had was with a particular individual that took food over to someone that was sick. The people that they took food to ended up testing positive, and then this person ended up having to be quarantined for two weeks because they took food over. You know, that's the kind of people we are. Our neighbors are sick. We're gonna take them food, and we're just trying to, look, sheriff ain't gonna pull somebody over for taking food over to their neighbor, but we want people to understand how dangerous this disease is, and that kind of minimalist contact can even contract it and spread it. That's what we're trying to hammer home. And you're, I mean, everything you said is absolutely right. You know, we, we don't wanna trample on anybody's rights or keep them doing that, but we're just trying to keep people safe as we possibly can.
Scott, I think it would, I think it would be good for you to break down to the people and the public what essential is and non-essential, because that, that's the main key to this and this that we're trying to do. And basically, if you don't know what that means, that's what I want you to do, explain to people. And the short term is, let's do what's necessary and not do what, you know, do away with what's not necessary if you can do that. But break it down to the, to the general public what, what that exactly means to those people that don't understand essential and non-essential.
What we're trying to encourage people to do is go do what you have to do, essential aspects. Go to work. You gotta go pick up your groceries. If you need to go, you know, get some new clothes, you know, do your basic shopping. If you gotta go to the bank, go to your insurance, you know, pay your insurance thing, do utilities. All those things, those are essential.
Get your paper rolled up if you need to carry your items. There's a button there.
Yeah, if you gotta, if you gotta take your pet to the vet.
Is it a paper? Your what?
Yeah.
If...
But the general public, the ones who don't have this paper, don't know that. That's reasonable.
As I like, we're talking about with the sheriff going hunting. You wanna go hunting, go hunting. Go, go do those things. But the things we're trying to keep people to be mindful of, and this is what, what's hard, is don't go hang out. Don't go over, you know, with these groups with friends' houses. You know, that's what we all wanna do. We all wanna go and be with others, and we're trying to discourage that, because it's amazing how quickly you can start bringing in so many more people. You go hang out with your neighbors, for instance. Well, they've been to work, and they've been in contact with this person and that person, and then you're in contact with them. Now, you're, you're in contact with your wife, and she goes off to work, and she's in contact with other people. That's how quickly it can spread. So we're encouraging workplaces to, you know, implement the best practices, which I believe all of ours are, but we're trying to keep those non-essentials of, look, we all love friendships, but let's try to avoid those for the next two weeks of intermingling with other families and going. And there was, you know, at Walmart, for instance, where people would just, you know, be all grouped up and a, you know, standing outside talking. That's the kind of thing, you know, just, just limit those kind of activities. We're asking for a couple of weeks, and hopefully, we can start slowing the spread, or as the common term around is flattening the curve locally.
Just more or less go to Walmart, get what you went after, and go home.
Or another local business.
Yeah, any local business. And it, if, for instance, somebody's got to go take care of their grandkids or something, that's, that's all fine and good. I mean, you know, it's...
Basically, just try to stay with your family, stay with your household as much as possible.
Scott, there's been a question about churches. I've had a few people call and things, but, you know, our church is doing it pretty much online, and a lot of churches are doing that. There's some churches, I don't think, have that capability for some reason. I've instructed them, you know, the state health order says 10 or less, you know. So I encourage churches to do that, not just, you know, just, we've had some over the county that's still congregating, 25 plus, and they're violation of the state order right there, but, you know, we're trying to preach to them or, you know, let them know that they can still have their services, but they gotta still remain under 10, 10 or less, or they're gonna be in violation of the order. We never want to shut down a church at all. That's not anything that, I want people to understand that.
My son goes to a very small church, and they had church yesterday and had it outside.
Right. Well, there's a lot of, we've changed all of it. We got, you know, we do, and but I've had some...
I guess that's my point, Sheriff. You said it's a state law, so legally, they can break these kinds of, these crowds up anyway.
The 10-person, it was 25, and then the governor set it down on the 27th at 10. That's, that's state law. That's, that's not something we did. That's, that's Governor Ivey and her state health officer, Dr. Harris, I believe.
And actually, Scott, it's nine.
But, that's right. It's right. 10 or above.
So that can be enforced.
That, that's right. And Sheriff mentioned the churches. The 25, I think there's, we have obviously a lot of small churches in our county that probably could comply with the 25. The, the nine or less is gonna be much more difficult for them.
Talk about leaving the county, Scott. Is that part of it, ain't that in here?
Yes, sir. Well, we, we encourage people not to as much as possible, but, but that's not gonna be disallowed, you know. But we encourage people to stay in the county. Sometimes that's not possible, because you have to go to the doctor in Florence or wherever, but we encourage people to stay here locally.
A lot of people work in different counties. That's...
That's right.
Go to your job.
But we're not, we're not limiting that travel. We're just encouraging people to stay.
I've had that question asked to me a couple times about leaving the county, you know, coming back in, but don't you, whatever, you know.
Yes, sir.
I guess that's my question. I wanna, why reinforce an extra when the governor's done declared this?
Well...
I mean, if law enforcement can already enforce it.
We're, we're doing...
That's why I'm losing this at. I don't...
Yes, sir. And we, we were doing extra because we were hearing from our local health, health officials that we needed to do a little extra, that we needed to hammer it home to our people about the importance of staying home and not co-mingling with others. The governor has received a tremendous amount of input and encouragement to do one thing versus another, and it appeared to me that she seemed troubled Friday in her message about wanting to go further, but having some, you know, restrictions about doing that. But she encouraged each area to consider their own needs, which I think is, is a wonderful idea. That's, I think, especially in our neck of the woods, we like that. We don't want somebody in Washington telling us what to do. We don't want somebody in Montgomery, even though we have to follow what they do, but we think, or at least I think, that this, these kind of restrictions are the best at being able to get the message across to people without further restricting their abilities. It's really, we're trying to send a message. We don't wanna close down and commission...
Legally, the law enforcement could stop somebody going down the road if they're out past curfew at any time, if we pass this, right?
That, that's right.
So I guess my question is, how can you enforce something when somebody's going to a grocery store, they get off work, they have to go back to the store for some reason, and these people are working under stress. Some of them, the way this, this job is, their jobs. Okay, then they get pulled over, questioning why are they out at night? You see what I'm saying?
Walmart's closed today, 3:00.
Well, they store, some of the gas stations and different things. You know, there's all kind of reasons, you know. Parent could get sick, a kid could get sick, or... That's all kind of reasons. That's what I was trying to make in the beginning, Kenneth. We're not doing this to pull people over, but who's to say it's not gonna happen?
And, and...
That's my point. Who's to say it's not gonna happen?
And, and that's a, a great question. And in fact, and I don't think he would mind me sharing some of our conversations, but our district attorney and I talked about this on Friday, and that was where he was coming from. We don't want our people, you know, pulled over that are just trying to get, get to the next day. They might have forgot something out. Most of our businesses are gonna be closed at a certain time. Like, I think 8:30 for Walmart, a lot of our gas stations are closed probably after, before 10:00. But I think our law enforcement will have to keep that in mind. And we don't wanna overtax them either for pulling over every Tom, Dick, and Harry that's out, out on the street. They know what's suspicious and what's, what's not. The biggest aspect of what we're trying to do is the congregation of people that are just mingling together.
But the governor's law says we can disperse that right now, right?
At, at 10 or more.
Okay, if that's the problem, why can't we just enforce that law if the governor's on state law?
Right. Well, we're...
I guess that's what I'm trying to get to. Why can't we just enforce that if that's the problem? If that's the problem?
And we can. What we're, we're trying to impress upon people about the congregation of other, we don't want you going out and mingling up with other, other people that are coming from different areas as well.
The state law says we can disperse that.
At, at 9 or more or 6 or less?
Yes. That's what I'm saying. That is already in, it's already a law. That's what I'm not catching on here. I don't understand. But also, if the state law says we can already do this, okay, and it's a problem, listen, enforce the state law. I mean, you see my point?
Mm-hmm.
I mean... That's not the only, that's not the only problem that will be with this is people congregating.
That, that's right.
I mean, that's the biggest one I hear.
That, that's our, our main problem, but what we're trying to get people to keep from doing is that, what we have is, we, we have people that are just going and they're hanging out with other people. That's not necessarily against state law. They're, they're meeting up, you know, and hanging out in a parking lot. Again, that, that group may not be in violation of what the governor has said, and so we're trying to reinforce those particular aspects of that locally, is that, well, we don't want you to, to go, like, I'd love to go hang out with a couple of my buddies right, right now. Let's all get together and meet up in their house. And we're trying to tell people that could be potentially dangerous.
But how can we place them at home?
Well, we can place them by asking them not to do it and by enforcing that, and hopefully with people...
See, that goes back to infringing on people's rights. That's what I'm talking about. It's a touchy subject here.
It's extremely touchy, and, and...
Because if the state law says we can disperse groups now, okay?
Right.
I mean, and if we can't see someone's somebody's house, we don't know if there's...
Right. And, and I think I'm a big of a supporter of the liberal interpretation of And, and I think I'm a big of a supporter of, of the liberal interpretation of the, the constitution as we, we have, but what we're trying to say is this particular disease is extremely dangerous and people are not getting how dangerous it is. I saw a group the other day that, you know, they were all outside and they were, you know, thinking they're all outside and they were all huddled together. There was 15 of them all huddled together like around this table and it's like, you know, y'all doing that for 30 minutes, you're defeating the purpose.
But this law, though, if we pass it and they're at their house, we tell them to go home, how can we enforce something when they're already at their house? How can you enforce something when they're at home and we're, we're passing a law saying you got to go home?
But, yeah, that's, that's how we can enforce it, by passing a law that, to tell them to go home.
But suppose they're already at home?
Well, thank what we're trying. By others, by others to leave that home.
But can we, by the state law, disperse them if they're in that minimal outside? Do you have the?
No.
Well, how can this law do it if we tell them to go home, they're already home?
Yeah.
See, that's what I'm saying, it don't. I'm not, I'm not trying to confuse anybody here, it just, it doesn't.
I think this, this is a member of what, what we've got and what the governor passed down. Kenneth, I understand what Kenneth said, you have to think about people's rights and stuff, but what, this, this may have some more stuff in it with a curfew like you're talking about, but this is to try to get the point across to people, this is serious business.
Yeah, this is, I mean.
This is, this is, this is your kids, your grandkids and your neighbors and everybody. This is serious business.
Well, the way I look at it, guys, too, is also, it's a strong recommendation that y'all set forth from Marion County residents, you know, to do this.
Right. We're hoping, we're at the mercy of the people to follow these guidelines that we're enforcing and we're asking them and, and as far as that goes, we're begging them, please, let's do this, cause if we don't, this may go to June or July and if we don't get ahead of it and, and if we can keep it where it's at right now, we, we may be good, you know? But what we're trying to impress on the people of Marion County is to please take precaution and do all you can do and, you know, go ahead and live and do what you gotta do, but, you know, try to follow these guidelines and to stay, stay your distance and do the best we can do. Really at the mercy of the people, asking them, you know, let's all do this together as, as a county, for the sake of the county.
One thing that people, you know, I, I've talked to a bunch of people, you know, I, I have one boy that's about 22, 23 year old. Well, I'm not worried about getting, you know, I'm young, I can overcome it. I said, yes, son, but what if you, if you come in contact with somebody that has it, you don't get it, but you go over to your grandmother's and eat supper and you give it to her and she dies? I said, now what kinda, you know, what do you think about that? Well, he had a whole different outlook on it then. I mean, this is serious business.
That's the way I kinda look at it, you know? I, I feel like I'm, I'm healthier enough that if I, if I was to contract, you know, that, I feel like I'm healthier enough to overcome it, but.
We hope we are anyway, but.
Yeah, we hope we are, but the elderly folks that we come in contact with, you know, that, they, they may not be that strong, you know, and, or don't have to be elderly. Maybe you've got some other health problems that, you know, that this would even push you over the edge, you know?
Do we need a motion to pass, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. And one thing to add to what Kenneth said, a lot of this, we're echoing what the governor's doing, but it also puts a little more teeth into it to reinforce that aspect of it by us being able to put the penalty provision in there for violating it. So that puts a little more teeth into it for, for those that are just intentionally abusing the system right now. And that, that's one of the main things that we can do locally is to put the teeth into it, to reinforce that aspect of it. And yes, Bob.
Are there any kind of fine with the state law?
There, there is. It's not, it's not direct with the state or health order, though. It's a state health order and there'd be potentially violation of that if you, you wanna, the system.
No, I've read it and it doesn't seem, I don't feel that any of my rights are being infringed upon. It leaves things to me that we're concerned about the health conditions of Marion County and trying to overcome this virus that we've never encountered before. And it's a concern for the people to help us get through this uncharted times.
That's, that's, that's the intent of it, is the concern of, of the people. There's, there's a juggling act of, of that concern, the concern for the people, the concern of this pandemic and then, you know, what are, what are people's rights and it's trying to marry those up, up as best as possible.
Bob, I agree. I mean, I agree, but we got the state law, okay? And it does that way your rights. When somebody's pulled over and asked why aren't they at home? When they're going down the road, can that legally be done? Through this, they can legally pull it over at any time and ask, why are they doing out here?
Sure.
I mean, that's infringing on your rights. I mean, there's no way to look at it. When you're in your vehicle going down the road and you can be pulled over and asked, why aren't you at home?
Well, that goes back, the first this was even mentioned, the DA called me, then he has talked to the sheriff and all the police chiefs, he's talked to Mr. Trump, he, he was worried about that. His concern was, and I'll just tell you what he said, if Winfield has a police officer and they're sitting at Taco Bell, an individual passes three or four times, he pulls him over to see what he's doing out at that time of the night and he's got a pound of meth in the front seat, he said, we're into it about, you know, did we actually have the legal right to pull him over?
Probable cause.
Probable cause. And I mean, that was, that was the DA's concern and, and the sheriff's too. I mean, I've talked to several of them.
But it could be anytime, any given day on anybody. Am I correct?
Right.
It could be, Kenneth, but as a law enforcement perspective as a whole, we're not gonna be out there harassing the public. We've instructed my guys, each police department, we instructed them for the last two weeks, we're doing non-essential reports over the phone instead of having face-to-face contact. What I want you to understand is we're not gonna be out here harassing everybody. Now.
Oh, I'm not saying I did.
Well, that's what you're saying.
I'm saying it.
It could, it could, if you've got certain, state troopers are working with us, all the city departments are working with us, my deputies, we're not gonna be out here 24 hours a day and if we catch you at 2:00 in the morning, we're gonna stop you and ask you where you going, where you headed. That's just common sense law enforcement. That's what we've always done. A lot of times when I worked at Hamilton PD, when Wayne was there, we knew people that didn't have a driver's license. We didn't write you a ticket if we seen you after 5:00 or 6:00 going to the grocery store, but if we seen you riding a loop at 12:00 at night, we wrote you another ticket. That's the same philosophy that we're gonna use in this situation. But the last thing I want is my deputies having contact with a lot of these folks cause if once it gets in my department, I've had it. We've all had it. I don't know what we're gonna do. But I, I see your, I see your concern, I see you for it.
But the state law says we can disperse crowds and that's the main problem, is the crowds.
Well, I understand that.
I mean, if you can, if you can change this and say, look, we're gonna disperse crowds we see somewhere instead of people just riding, ordinary people going wherever, I ain't got a problem with that. And I can see.
They're not gonna be stopping ordinary people in the ordinary time of the day of traveling.
This law gives them the right to do that.
Well, if I was a police officer, I'm gonna be.
I mean, I wouldn't either. I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
If we've got an officer, whether it be a city officer, county or state trooper that is just out here to intentionally stop somebody.
I'm not saying they are, but.
We don't need them to start with.
Right.
Right, Kevin?
Right.
I mean.
I'm not saying they're gonna do that, but legally they can.
It would give, it would give, it would give the officers that right. Again, that's not the intent and, and that's why that meeting was held with the, the police chiefs. I think y'all talked to them Friday.
Friday afternoon.
And I hate to say, the intent of this is not to pull anybody over, cause obviously it's written where they could be pulled over, because I don't want people to just look at this flippantly, but the intent of this is to protect our citizens as best as we can.
That's where we gotta go back and say, they got enough sense to do this.
And without going further because y'all can go further and this is about as minimal as, as y'all can do in this regard. Now, hopefully it gets to the point where nothing else has to be done, but, but there could be a lot more requirements put in, like we saw with the city of Tuscaloosa and we saw with Jefferson County and the city of Birmingham. I mean, they went.
What's the extent of this? What's, what's the, what's the length of this?
I think it's.
Seven, eight.
Seven, eight. But in the beginning, the, the first drought that Scott had was from another county, I'll not say where, but he has cut it down, I would say six pages from what everything they had in. I mean, this is just, I told Scott, I said, we need it bare minimum and, and he took the same, and I said, it needs to be domed up where I can understand. I mean, that's.
Yeah, that, we, we, and, and Tim was exactly right. There, there was no intent here to, to go as far as some, because Jefferson County had the main outbreak in the state originally and Birmingham has done some pretty drastic things. Y'all would have the right to do a lot of those things. I don't think that's necessary. I don't think we're at that point. I think what the governor has done, cutting down a lot of businesses knocks that part of it out for y'all. I think we're just trying to hammer home, stay home as much as possible.
But it's seven, eight that ends.
Unless, unless it needs to be extended.
Right. That gives us a little over two weeks, so hopefully we'll have reached that peak.
So the first time they're pulled over, are they fined or what? Are they giving a warning?
Well, no, they'd be warned.
When will they be fined? What, what?
It's, I, I hate to speak for the sheriff, but I, I think we, we can probably look at this like we're speeding our law enforcement know what, who's violating this and, and who, who's not and, and who to be warned and how many times to warn somebody.
And the question, the warning system in the, in Move still shows up that there was a warning given, right? So when they get, when they're given a warning, in Move, it actually shows up where you got one from the different places. So we would actually have a record of, of that interaction.
And I'm sure all the places probably, in Kevin, of this, if they are a government, they do stop and ask them to disperse and give them a warning then, but if it's still, if it keeps occurring at the same place, they will go with the rights and tickets. I mean, that's common sense.
Verbal warning and then if it needs to go further.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to pass the curfew? One thing that probably, y'all might not have fully understand, Scott explained it, didn't go into re, re deep, real deep into it, but the quarantine, private judge has done put it on. It will go into effect at 5:00 this afternoon. We have nothing to do with quarantine.
That's right. And, and a lot of, a lot of the aspects of, of the quarantine is a lot of, some of the things that Kenneth mentioned, that's your restriction of movement and that's done by the private judge outside of y'all's jurisdiction.
I might motion we follow the directions here that decorate the emergency conditions for this coronavirus.
Have a second. I'll second. All in favor?
My question, Scott, oh, can you cover this in reading this to the public for where, cause there's a lot of people in the county, now they, they might, they might not have emails and they don't get the texts we get to kinda cover what this says, or is that too much reading for you? And I think we need to give the paper, a copy of this to where they can put the whole thing in there. That's just my opinion, where people can, you know, if you, if you don't get a paper and you don't, you don't get emails and, and all these texts on all of this that we've been reading about, you know, the people that are in the city limits, elderly people especially, you know, they might wanna know exactly the, all of the details on it.
All right. Yes, sir. I can read, read it if, if it's okay if I skip over all the whereas.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. Just brief through it and tell them the main thing and the points of it. I think that would be good.
Roughly the first page establishes the, the history, the outline of the pandemic and the elevation of it to that status. Goes to the orders from the head state health officer and Governor Ivey as well up to March 27th. And then the local reports that the county has received regarding the current health conditions in Marion County. And then it establishes that the probability and the possibility of, you know, more dangerous conditions inside this county and the use of our facilities. It also goes through all the municipalities in the, in the county being under this as well. And so then it's proclaimed that the emergency conditions in the state statute do exist and that, that includes the section 22 dash 12 dash 12, which gives the judge appropriated Marion County the authority to issue the quarantine. Then it does say, "The purpose of this order is to promote the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Marion County and to mitigate the spread of infectious diseases, specifically the COVID-19 virus by reducing the risk of exposure during a time of outbreak. Is hereby ordered that a 24-hour public safety curfew is hereby imposed in Marion County beginning at 5:00 on today, Monday, March 30th, and it continues in effect until 5:00 on April 17th." It's further proclaimed in order that a quarantine for Marion County is hereby officially declared. Quarantine is the forced isolation or restriction of free movement of a person or persons to prevent the spread of a notifiable disease or health condition. In our case, specifically COVID-19 virus is such a notifiable disease. During this curfew and quarantine, all persons shall not be in or remain in public places and shall remain in their places of residence if within Marion County except as provided herein. And then it goes to the exceptions to that, going to and from work, engaging in essential activities, which is, you know, visiting a health veterinarian, peer professional, obtaining medical supplies or medication, obtaining grocery items, utilizing local restaurant services, patronizing local retail shops, conducting normal everyday business activity, fulfilling child custody arrangements and orders, lawful childcare arrangements and any other legally mandated government purpose. And then there's a list of, you know, things that specifically are not prohibited, like providing care for minors, elderly, dependents, persons with disabilities or other vulnerable persons, returning to one's place of residence from outside the county, traveling to one's place of residence located outside the county, traveling basically through, through the county from outside the county to another location, compliance with an order of law enforcement or court order, traveling to and from business, traveling to or from financial institutions, insurance companies and related financial services or anything else that may be legally mandated. And we go through the six-foot requirement and request that people maintain that social distancing practices, other activities that are exempted or outdoor activities. And we just listed some, but these are not limited, like walking, hiking, running, cycling, golfing, hunting, scooters, roller skates, skateboards or other personal mobility devices. Those are all okay. We're just saying, maintain again, activities that, where you can keep distance away from one another, caregiving if you have to care or support a friend, a family member or pet. Then we reinforce the state order about the 10, 10 persons or more or non-work-related gatherings of any size that cannot maintain a consistent six-foot distance. And then put in there that basically the state health officer, the order, the state health officer supersedes this. So if the state health officer comes back with a new proclamation next week, then whatever is stated in that would control if it conflicts with anything in here. And that's basically some of it.
Do we have a motion to adjourn or could it be done adjourned?
It's not like a motion.
A second. All in favor? May adjourn.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.